Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please take a moment of silence. Please stand for the flag. Toulou. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Publics Meeting Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald News, the Suburban Trends, The Record, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, Cablevision of Warwick, and West Milford TV 77, and posted in the Administration Building. Hobbies of the Board Meeting Calendar Resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township Library, and all district schools. Roll call, Ms. Francisco?
Mrs. Riconno.
Here.
Mr. Seidowitz.
Here.
Mr. Lippi.
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Here.
Mr. Guarino.
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Here.
Mrs. Lockwood.
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Mrs. Romeo.
Here.
To start this meeting, we are going to go into executive session. Can I get a motion?
I move that the Board immediately go into executive session for approximately 45 minutes for the purpose of conducting a grievance hearing. The executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome back. Can I please have roll call, Ms. Francisco?
Mrs. Riconno.
Here.
Mr. Seidowitz.
Here.
Mr. Lippi.
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Here.
Mr. Guarino.
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Here.
Mrs. Lockwood.
Here.
Mrs. Romeo.
Here. Bear with me. We're going to go a little bit out of order from the agenda. I would like to ask Gabby to do her student representative report first.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So on March 3rd, we raised $1,200 at our annual volleyball tournament that will be donated to the Alzheimer's Association. This Saturday on April 1st, the PTSO is running a food truck festival with a car show at the high school. The annual district arts festival is tomorrow from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. The high school musical, Something Rotten, which was held on March 9th, 10th, and 11th, was very successful. Digital citizenship night for grades 3rd through 8th was held at the high school on March 22nd. And junior prom is this Friday, March 31st, at Casa Bianca.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Dr. Anemoon, for your superintendent's report.
Yes, we will be briefed tonight. I know we have a backed agenda. Early this month, we had one of our high school students receive the Passaic County Unsung Heroes Award. This is awarded to one student from every high school in the county for making outstanding contributions to their schools and their communities. So this year's award is one of our seniors, Gianna Hardison.
Congratulations, Gianna. Thank you. Okay, next, I'm going to ask the auditors to present.
Okay, I'd like to present Jim Cerullo from the audit firm, Wilcox and Company.
Good evening, everyone. Every year, we come in to the annual audit. This is for the period ending June 30th, 2022. Here we are at the end of March, going over these reports. Normally, this would take place usually in December meeting. For the fourth year in a row, we had to wait on information from the Division of Pensions, which put off the due date of the audit report from December 5th to March 17th this year. There's two reports. A small report you get is the Auditor's Management Report. It has basically 10 areas that Department of Education requires us to look into, along with generally accepted auditing standards. We're supposed to report any finding, no matter how large or small. Please report that there's no audit findings in this year's report. The larger report is called the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. It's made up of various sections, as I tell, all the board events that I represent. And just to backtrack, I'm not the partner in charge here. Can't. We did have conflict in meetings tonight, so I'm here representing the firm. Did do the audit here probably about 30, 40 years ago.
You just tell me, is your microphone on red in front of you?
The bottom part's on red.
Thank you.
The larger report, probably the most meaningful section of this report is the budgetary basis of accounting statements. They begin with the C exhibits. They're the only ones who really give a true financial picture that you utilize, the Department of Ed utilizes. This year, you did have a small increase in your reserves. You were able to put money into your maintenance reserve, your capital reserve. And this was the last year of the COVID years that the Department of Education allowed you to maintain 4% surplus instead of 2%. So moving forward, you're going to see a drop in your surplus. I know you utilize, you know, significant amounts of your surplus every year in your budget process, but there's going to be less of it available moving forward now that we're out of the COVID phase of reporting. I don't know if anyone has any questions on any of the two reports. I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Yes, for a simple board trustee like myself, what would you say are the most important numbers that I should find in any of these books?
Well, the small one has the, at the end of the report, has the excess surplus calculation. Actually, the last page has the one that has no audit findings. But prior to that is the excess surplus calculation. And in the large report, Exhibit C1.
Thank you.
Hey, I do have something. Over the years, every time we get an auditor's report, there's always one area that we have difficulty with and that we have to make like a remediation for and plan. There's nothing in this report this time. It's a perfect report. Barbara, thank you so much for everything you do. And thank you, Jim.
I have to thank my staff because they are incredible with the, when the auditors come in to do all the testing of the purchase orders and the payroll, they're spot on. And they are just an amazing group of people. And they do a great job for West Milford.
Considering the financial difficulties we're having, this is an incredible report. So thank you.
Agreed. Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, what a beautiful way to start a large meeting. And next, the Director of Education's report, Mr. Novak.
Thank you, Mrs. Romeo. Mr. Winston, can you fire it up?
Sure.
All right. Just want to comment on what our student rep mentioned in her report. We had our, the return of our annual digital citizenship night last week. We had over 300 registered guests, and we had, you know, a large majority of those people show up, which was, which is a great event. I know I have a number of my Educational Technology Committee people here in the, in the room. So I just want to again thank, thank everyone for putting, putting this event together. We were able to, you know, present to parents on the dangers of, you know, the dangers of all the apps, cyberbullying, the things that our kids get involved in on their, on their phones and on technology devices. We were able to have a closing keynote from a presenter named Kevin Honeycutt, who really, you know, who really closed the event with some heart and soul about, you know, the positives, the positives that can be, you know, done with the, with students' access to digital tools and that type of thing. So, you know, it was a great, great night. We were able to raffle off a lot of prizes due to, you know, a lot of the community donations that we received. So we were, you know, very happy with the success of the event. Mr. Jordan from our TV science class was able to have some students and himself recording from the evening, and he put together a short highlights video that I'm going to play now.
They're nice shoes, Dan.
I didn't, I didn't bring it. Anyway, Mr. Jordan made a great video. I will. Yes, yes. So the, the next part of the agenda is a, is a follow-up to digital citizenship night. One of the programs that we introduced that night is something called SmartSocial.com. It's something that we registered for as a district. Every family has access to it. We have over 150 families signed up. And when I send that video link to everyone via school messenger, I will include the QR code for how families can sign up for Smart Social. What basically, in a nutshell, what SmartSocial.com is, it's a collection of video tutorials, access to live webinars with the representative from Smart Social that brings families and parents through how to set up phones with parental protections, goes through Roblox and the dangers that, you know, for, for children meeting online. It goes through Fortnite. It goes through all of these different apps that, that all of our kids are on all the time and exposes some of the dangers that many, many families don't, don't know about. So when you see that message come through, make sure that you use the code. I'll also include some instructions for how to do a QR code, you know, if a guest in the audience who needed some of those instructions in the past, Dr. McQuaid, not to call you out, but, so I will send that out. And I do want to thank again, especially the EdTech Committee. I sent them an email today, a follow-up on the event, and I described it in one word, wow, Trish Grady just reminded me of that. And that, that's really what it was. It was a tremendous feel-good event for the, for the district. So that's it. And just look out for, look out for that email. Thank you.
Mrs. Francisco, special reports and correspondence, please.
Yes, the board members have the minutes from the February 21st meeting for consideration.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following Board of Education meeting minutes, February 21st, 2023 budget regular meeting, February 21st, 2023 executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? My president's report, I tried to not make it lengthy, but it was just a little bit impossible. So this is my longest one so far. I apologize ahead of time. In the last month, I attended so many events in West Milford. There are so many things to be proud of and happy about. I saw what was to me the biggest wrestling event I've ever seen in my life at the high school. Said when I left that I would blog on how if there were any single moms out there, that that's where they would want to be. The family reading nights in our elementary schools, I've heard that they have been amazing and so much fun and really inclusive to all of our students. I attended the Marshall Hill fundraiser. I had an amazing time. It was really fun. It was bingo and a tricky try. I was really impressed by the principal and how he read every single number of the entire night without error. He didn't lose his voice or his mind. And it was a long night, lots of fun. I heard that PK traps was awesome. The kids made really great things. I'm sure that there were a lot of traps events possibly. I only heard about that one, was invited. And that they had a very amazing Wizards event. This month, I attended both of the high, of the musicals. The high school musical was astonishing. The, our West Milford students are so talented. I heard it from grandparents. I heard it from people that live in other towns. I also attended the Mary Poppins Jr. production at Macapin every single night that I could, every night that they had it, and was just in love. Mary Poppins is my favorite. Digital citizenship night was the first time that I was able to attend. I was extremely impressed. I want to thank Dan and everyone in the district that teaches our students about digital citizenship every day and every moment that you have. I went home. I did a lot of my own research prior to it on how to be a parent and talk to my 13-year-old about what's on his cellphone. And I loved that the beginning of Dan's presentation, he had a picture of a saw, this big chop saw. And he said to parents, you wouldn't send your child into the garage to work on this chop saw by themselves without giving them instruction. And I presented that to my 13-year-old. And I said, we have a workshop downstairs, a workshop, and we've never sent you down there alone. And we've never sent you to work on those things because we train you. And that's what we need to do with your cellphone. And he finally got it. So I was given the words to use as a parent, and it was amazing. And I just want to thank everyone involved. It was so awesome. And I'm looking forward to it again. Okay, the last thing I have that is actually a surprise is I need to thank Level One Games on Route 23 South. They're donating to West Milford Schools $500 worth of Pokemon. We have multiple of the, all of these items. It is not on tonight's agenda, so I am going to ask the board to accept these as a donation that Mr. Novak could use for our clubs or as prizes, or, you know, maybe for special ed students as incentives, or whatever it is, anywhere. I want to thank Tim Epsy for making this happen, knows that West Milford has a large Pokemon crowd of students that go into their store, and they want to support them. The owners, Emerydo and Cynthia, so this is my soapbox, sorry. And like, they're just so amazing. Pokemon is a game that kids can learn math and reading skills if they know how to play, and it is really fun for them. So I'm excited that, you know, hopefully the board will accept this donation tonight. And the very last thing that I have is I'm excited to see tomorrow night's District-wide Arts Festival. The showcases are always top-notch, and our students and their talents come and see their talents in art, music, and dance. Dance? Maybe not. I'll dance. But anyway, I do have to dance in my notes. That's weird. Next year. Thank you. That's my president's report. At this time, I'll turn it over to public comment. This portion of the meeting is open to members of the public for their purpose of addressing resolutions on this agenda only. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by their chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes, and then, time permitting, other public comments limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the 30-minute period transpires. All members of the public speaking during this public comment period are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to sign the register provided and to give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged, and the board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Ms. Francisco, is there anyone signed up to speak?
No one signed up.
Okay. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
My name is Courtney Stevenson. I have a question under policy, number N4. I am concerned about what the class size changes have been and also what the assignment of students is. It says that documentation is provided electronically. I know that that is only to board members, and I would like it publicly said to everyone here and on camera what the class size changes are and what the assignment of students, which is student choice, what the changes have been.
So my first response is both of those are first reading. And Dr. Anemoon assured me they are on the website, under policy. So first reading means that tonight we approve what we're working on and that we will continue to work on that in next month's committee meeting. And then next board meeting, it will come for a second, which will then make that policy into effect. At this time, the changes are in red. The highlights on the website are highlighted in red, I'm told. Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Stephanie Markward, 486 Lake Shore Drive in Hewitt. I have a son in Macapin and one in Maple Road. I'm here tonight for the same reason most people are here, to address the cuts proposed by the superintendent. No one can argue that the funding formula in New Jersey is not broken. We all know that, as we've known for years since our district has started experiencing millions of dollars in cuts. Taxpayers, parents, and school officials need to continue to fight to have that formula fixed. Unfortunately, since these cuts started, there has been little done by the superintendent as far as problem solving or thinking outside the box to ensure our children receive the best education possible. Each year, we have watched as cuts and tax increases are presented, but we haven't seen as any real initiative by the superintendent. There are numerous grants out there, so one would think our superintendent would have formed a grant-writing committee that could help bring money into the district. State had millions in CTE grant money available to comprehensive high schools that could have been used to keep students in our high school. But I don't recall that being mentioned by our superintendent. I'd be willing to bet you have 20 teachers in this audience right now that would be more than willing to write grants for our district. While the presentation at the last board meeting touted a fiscally responsive budget, I think there should be a focus on being fiscally responsible and making education the top priority. Instead of cutting ELA math teachers and media specialists, maybe we could offer one world language in Macapin and two in the high school. While having an array of languages available to students is nice, reading, writing, arithmetic, and digital literacy are the foundation of education and should never be cut while there are electives that can go. The superintendent suggests cutting professional development for the staff, but has no issue spending $12,000 for two administrators to go to Disney. Since there has been only one actual professional development day in the last seven or eight years, I guess he figures the staff won't miss what they really don't have. I'm sure it was an oversight that the testing coordinator Stipen wasn't listed, because clearly we can't ask staff at every level to do more with less and not give this role to our Director of Education where it belongs. The superintendent listed cutting security in the middle school and high school. I imagine he'd feel differently if his office was housed in those buildings. We have a supervisor of technology and network systems specialist that make over $253,000 combined. Let's not forget the $37,000 for the webmaster. These positions could be combined, and you could pay someone $100,000 to be your head of IT and hire another network technician for $50,000. That's $140,000 in savings right there. As for capital projects, nothing should be done unless it's 100% necessary if it means our kids lose anything academically. The pay to participate for clubs, band, athletics, et cetera, has been $75 for over 10 years. We all pay hundreds for sports and activities through rec. So it's fair to say that raising that fee even $150 is more than fair. Sadly, we have lost staff, and in all honesty, they can go other places. However, the ones who have lost the most are our children, and they can't leave. As far as the tax increase, anyone who paid attention in 2016 knew that eventually the 4% tax increase would come. As a matter of fact, it was Mrs. Francisco who advised that board that a 0% tax increase would only defer a higher increase to a later date. So the board that voted for that 0% tax increase kicked the can down the road, and now it's here. Naturally, there are cuts that have to be made. There's no way around that, but it can't be at the expense of our children. I've given just a few examples of things that can be done. As board members, none of you are in an enviable position. The superintendent has shown throughout his tenure in West Milford that education is not his priority. So now that he has secured a five-year contract in other districts, the onus is on the board to put the education of our children first. West Milford teachers encouraged and nurtured my love of reading and writing. So I will leave the board with this from the great J.K. Rowling. Dark and difficult times lie ahead. Soon, we must all face the choice between what is right and what is easy. I ask you to please choose wisely.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kristy Clave. I'm a teacher here. I also live in town, 31 Hilltop Road, Newfoundland. I just wanted to take a minute to recognize and say a sincere thank you to Jackie Adisi, who has made such an impact on our students' lives for all of her years of service in our district. She's an aide in my class. She's not only the most kind and loving person I know, but she has sustained many years of working in my classroom, has my seamless right hand. We will be at a loss without her, but we are happy to celebrate her. And don't worry, we are already doing emergency drills where we call Mrs. Adisi to find out where something is and how to handle Mrs. Clave when she's out of control. But in all seriousness, Jackie Adisi, you have done so much for so many and never want the limelight, but you always deserve it.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Hi, my name is Brendan Kenny. Live at 280 High Crest Drive. And I really just wanted to talk about three main concerns that I had in regards to the plan to cut media specialists. I don't know any of the media specialists personally, but I can only tell you what my children say about them and how just they're incredible people. My concern is, is really three-tiered. Number one, our rotation for our kids and our teachers. So already, we have three media specialists for now five schools. So my, I would be curious to know how a rotation would work that wouldn't burden both the student or the teacher. I mean, I think that that's a really fair question to ask. We can't keep asking more and more and more of our teachers and paying them less than what many in the county average would be looking at. And it's no surprise that we lose a lot of our faculty for that reason. Second thing I would ask is in January of 2023, is requested that media specialists help teach this course content. And that, that is a class that's going to be proposed, I'm guessing, for next year. So my question would be, cutting three media specialists to one, how would we ask one individual to teach that class in five different schools in addition to run the exact same responsibilities that our students, that our faculty members are being asked to do? And then finally, I was part of the redistricting committee here with, with Mr. Novak and many others, and I'm passionate about it. and I'm passionate about the education in this district. I went here as a 2003 graduate. We have some really amazing people sitting in the audience, and the way that you retain and keep really positive educational environment is by retaining and keeping your own. And I can't tell you how many great people we've seen come and go because of our inability to retain our own. And, you know, will a school survive without a media specialist, perhaps? Will a school survive without, you know, two or three teachers that we could cut? Sure. But at what point do we really look at what we're doing in the school and say to ourselves, enough is enough? And, you know, I know the battle. I've seen the battle at the high school level. I'm a high school teacher in Bergen County, and I've seen the competition between the SAG Tech and the struggle that Westmofford is facing against it. I see that, and I see it in athletics and academics and what they can offer, and it's a challenge. But the retention of our own has to be a priority here. And again, I coach a lot of the kids in this town. I coach a lot of teachers' kids. They're just the most amazing people, and, you know, I'm really hopeful that we can come to a resolution that we won't have to cut important, meaningful people from this district. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker? Dr. Goff.
Hello, everyone. I'm Dr. Marissa Goff, resident at 34 Center Street, and unfortunately, I have something typed up tonight. Okay. So in the last few weeks, multiple parents have reached out to me to speak on their behalf during this meeting. After posting last month's preliminary budget, here is what parents are having concerns with, first being the loss of media specialists. My understanding is that they are a vital source to our students and their literacy education, as well as their digital literacy education. Now that New Jersey public schools are required to teach media literacy, who will be responsible for this curriculum? I hope that extra work is not being put on your already strained teachers. One parent said to me, quote, "Teachers are spread thin with their current schedules, some including Spanish and health in addition to other mandatory curriculum." How could they possibly add anything else? She also pointed out that our district has a great program called Digital Citizenship Night, which is offered to grades three through eight currently. Having the media specialists at the elementary level is what helps this program flourish as this progresses to the other grades. So what I brought here tonight is what? So what I have here is just a book, right? No big deal. Not just any book, but one that the media specialist helped my daughter pick out. She gets so excited when she comes home with these on Monday nights, because she gets to show me what books she picked out, and we read it together at bedtime. I have seen her gain independence with both reading and digital literacy because of this. This confidence is due to her amazing kindergarten teacher and the literacy specialist at Westbrook. She'll actually at night point out the words, "Look, mommy, a red word." "Look, mommy, a CVC word." And she'll go through this with me. Seeing her excitement is something. The loss of media specialists will leave an immediate and lasting gap in our children's education. I understand that there is a fundamental problem: increased costs and declining revenue. I need you, as the board, to think outside the box, and it's like there's an echo in here, be proactive rather than reactive. I need to see where, I need, I need to know as a resident where we can be granted funds elsewhere, rather than putting the strain on our teachers, children, our residents in the community to bridge this gap. What I, as many others, have witnessed in this vicious cycle is declining state aid, cutting programs, cutting school positions, further declining state aid, closing the largest and most centrally-located school, taking that much-needed stabilization aid money for "closing" said school, "closing" I use with quotes, and putting it into a program that does not guarantee consistent revenue. Now you're foreseeing another financial deficit and trying to figure out where to take this money from. Transportation is one area in particular that needs to be looked at more closely, as I cannot understand it. How can we save money on buses? Maybe closing the most centrally-located school wasn't wise, since kids have to be bused now further from their home and daycares. Maybe closing the most centrally-located school wasn't wise, since programs now have to be moved from other elementary schools to ones that are further away. Adding to transportation costs, something needs to change, because families, staff, and residents cannot take much more of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker?
Thanks to the website being amazing now, Ms. Robinson.
Mrs. Stevenson, hang on one second.
I was sitting on the board, but found it.
Mrs. Stevenson, hang on one second. Is there someone else that would like to speak before, Mrs. Stevenson? Yes. I'm sorry. I have to ask you to just wait.
Hi. My name is Teresa Lindholm. I live at 41 Somerville Road in Hewitt, New Jersey. In case anybody didn't know, it was New Jersey. I want to thank you for your time and your commitment to the board. I want to address my concerns, especially about the redistricting of the schools. I feel like you had one plan, and then you hired someone to fulfill your plan. There was no Plan B. There was no Plan C, and you got someone to fulfill your plan. What if there were budget cuts? What if there was a lower enrollment? And what if, what if a school had to close? And now here we are, and the redistricting hasn't even happened, and we're already cutting the budget. We're losing teachers. I'm worried. We're cutting budget. We're cutting programs. I'm worried. I'm worried about the students. I'm worried about the teachers. I'm worried about the class sizes. I'm scared. The rumor is you're leaving. You made decisions when you were vested in the school, and now you're leaving? How are this, what are your decisions that you're going to make when you're not, no longer vested? I'm just, I'm just concerned. Why are we here again? There was no Plan B. We shouldn't be here again. You knew that budgets were gonna, you knew budgets were going to be cut. I think that you all should have been a little bit more prepared. Maybe we could have, we could have lost one media specialist, but now we're cutting three. We all should have been a little bit more prepared for this. Rumors that we're going to have to close another school in two years? There should have been a Plan B. There should have been a Plan C. I'm just, I'm just nervous, and I just don't know why that we're here again.
Thank you. Although I would let Ms. Stevenson.
I know. I'm sorry.
My name is Liz McQuade, 32 Biset Drive, Westmofford, New Jersey, also. I'm speaking to several agenda items this evening. First, I want to take time to congratulate and thank Karen Wilm, or Karen, I have to write it down, Barrero, our supervisor of transportation, as well as Mrs. Adisi. Both of these women served our district well. So I think Mrs. Clave said it, and I know Ms. Wilm has been an integral part as well. I would also like to welcome Dr. Ressa to Westmofford and our school community, and congratulate Dr. Matlos, who I did see earlier in the room, on his new position at Macapin School. Dr. Matlos has extensive experience and will be a huge asset to our middle school. We, as Westmofford, are lucky. All of our administrative positions in Westmofford are extremely important. Strong leaders inspire others to dream more, learn more, and do more. As a parent of two school, of two daughters in this community, I also wanted to speak tonight on the agenda item, which is a hand-carry for Dr. Anamon's resignation. Before his arrival, this district had five superintendents in an eight-year period. Dr. Anamon provided Westmofford with consistency, leadership, and strength, and I want to take a moment to personally congratulate him in his new position and thank him for the years that he gave us as a Highlander. Dr. Anamon, thank you for being a visionary leader that set ambitious goals for those around you. Thanks for supporting the students with special needs and being committed to all students to grow academically and socially. You do not look for recognition in an often thankless position. You endured multiple fiscal challenges that our community faced over the years and still provided our children with the best quality education that you and the board felt at that time. So as we look forward to our future, to the board, it is my hope that you'll look to fill the position with a strong educational leader that loves the community, has the strength that it will take to face these financially-difficult times, and find a leader that remains student-focused. Thank you.
Mrs. Francisco, are we close to the 30 minutes? And is there another speaker? Okay. We have 10 minutes.
Oh, hi. My name is Lisa Bingham. I'm at 230 Lake Shore Drive in Hewitt, and I just wanted to talk about some of the proposed cuts, especially in special education particularly, and I'm just going to be super selfish regarding Macapin and the social worker. I know that one of the two social workers is potentially going to be cut, but just in general, with special education, having those cuts, that could be potentially hazardous with special education and just like the aftershock and aftereffects from the parents and looking at, like, if you look at potentially with the parents arguing later on, I just wanted everyone to be cognizant of that. As you know, we could be a really argumentative bunch. But that being said, that's secondary, but I really wanted to address tonight the social worker role and just talk about the two that we have currently and how essential they are and how much they do and how, how difficult it would be to lose any of them, especially at Macapin. As you guys know, middle schoolers, I see sometimes, as my daughter went into middle school this year, middle school is such an interesting age and such an interesting time, and like for mental health and having these case managers there and these social workers helping them as they transition through puberty is so essential, and to lose one would be terrible. Tracy Jenkarelli is my daughter's social worker and case manager, and she, sorry, I'm so nervous. Forgive me, I just kind of need to warm up, but she, thank you. She basically was like a gift given to me by God or Dr. McQuade at the time, same, but basically, she, she was. She's amazing. They're both amazing. Sorry. But she, she's so amazing, and she's not like somebody who just like handles an IEP or, or just like tomorrow, Shonora's going to be going into her club, and sometimes she isn't, like she needs some cues, she needs some help. She doesn't just go over like the basics of IEPs and special education. She's going to, like, I'll touch base with her, and she'll help Shonora, like, and, you know, coordinate with the teachers to move into the clubs and things like that and to go through the different, and it's not just my one, my daughter, it's all these children and her whole caseload, and there's so much of an umbrella of what they do with mental health as well as the educational process, and so many things I have no idea about because I'm just a parent and I'm so dopey, but there's so many things that they do that, so many roles beyond what they do, and the idea that there would only be one at Macapin is baffling to me, and the idea that this cut would happen is startling. So I hope that, as someone mentioned before, using some out-of-the-box scenarios to possibly save and retain this position would be wonderful. I have no idea what they are, and I would certainly be willing to explore that as a parent, as my limited role, but I would really be open to seeing what we could do to preserve that position, and I would advocate for it and beg for it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi. Kristen Seber, 16 Hillview Court. I didn't plan to come up, so if I'm a little disheveled, excuse me, but I'm going to kind of echo a lot of sentiments of what people have already said. I've been in the district for a very long time, aside from growing up here and whatnot, and I've been in other districts before. I understand cuts need to be made, but what I need the board to realize, aside from the admin, is how important some of those cuts that are being proposed are. Media specialists, we don't have enough to begin with. You know, for example, I, right now, I'm an encore teacher, so I'm in all grades in the entire building. Right now, my fifth graders are working on an informational report, and they need books that they need to be able to actually research. I have a media specialist who went above and beyond, outside of the two buildings, to get a book for a few students that we didn't have access to. If they needed it, it was ordered on Amazon and here in two days, for the most part. And as a staff member, I can't tell you how many times, being in my new role that I'm in, that I've needed to go and get the support from them and any kind of a techie thing with Google or this or that, you know, I'm making all these reports for all these meetings that I'm in now with admin, and I can't look stupid, you know, I'm a staff member. I need your help. And without a doubt, they're always there. And on the flip side, I have a little kindergartner who's in district as well now, and the highlight of her week, aside from music, is the fact that she gets to go to library not once, but twice a week. Once a week, they get to go read a story together, and another day, they kind of do all kinds of STEAM and different activities and projects. She now comes home and teaches all her stuffed animals what they learned. So, again, I know cuts need to be made, but, you know, we are really, really thin on music. We are really thin on our arts, and this is something that our district prides themselves in. You know, that's something that drives people to Westmofford. We have a district arts festival. You know, we have the Digital Citizenship Night. That doesn't happen without those media specialists. It also does not happen with all the other staff, but I bet you could pull any single teacher in this audience right now, every single one of them is going to tell you, hands down, more than 10 times a week, that media specialist, whether she's in the building or not in the building, because she's at another building part-time, they're there. You send them an email, 10, 11 o'clock at night, "I didn't forget, I just didn't get to you," and there's your answer. There's your resource, there's your direction, there's your everything. So just asking you, before you like start to make cuts, if you need to, they're going to kill me for this, but take a walk into their classroom, see what they're doing with kids. Ask kids, "What are you learning?" Ask the teachers, "What do you need the support and resources in?" Because our admin are stretched thin, too. So there are another resource for us, as staff members, to go to. So that was just the one thing. The other thing is to kind of piggy off the counseling. As a parent in district and of a young parent with all these kids coming out of COVID, I am extremely nervous at the fact that we have, even on the board, that we're going to look at cutting counselors or cutting any kind of social work with all of our social, emotional, learning goals as a board and as a district. It's very concerning. You know, we should be looking at how do we get funding to now have a full-time counselor in every building, let alone cutting them, for both the support staff as well as the kids and families. Thank you.
Thank you. We need to extend. Do we have another speaker? Well, our last speaker will then be Mrs. Stevenson. And in her defense, she comes to every meeting and is normally the only speaker.
I am. I am. So, sorry. Sorry, sorry. So I did find the information. Thank you. The website is great, and this is something that was important for me to bring up because it's not something that's public as much as some of the other things. So what the policy change says is 25 kindergartners at max. 25. That, like, you've lost your marbles completely. I'm sorry, but you have. When everybody was talking here tonight, I was thinking how wonderful it is that you have all these people here. You have an amazing community. When you were proposing to close a school, I don't know whose idea it was, you created committees. There was the fiscal committee, correct, Barbara? There was all different type of committees. What if you made committees on who could write grants and how to research grants and how to fund? You have this community that is more than willing to help. Unfortunately, we are losing a great superintendent whose time here was very well-stable. We need to really start thinking outside of the box in how we can help each other.
Thank you. That's our 30-minute time. If there is another speaker, we could look to extend if the board wanted. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak?
Seeing none, I'd like to close public comments.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right. Just have to make two amendments to the agenda as presented. First one is going to be on page seven. It is Personnel/Student Affairs Resolution Number 12. We're going to add a substitute for special projects. Name is Julie Keefe, K-E-E-F-E, and this is just pending medical clearance from her. And then we are going to pull on page eight Personnel/Student Affairs Resolution Number 16. That will be pulled from the agenda. Number 16.
Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda, to adopt the amended agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mrs. Lockwood?
Okay. I make a motion to approve items one through four in education.
Second.
Any questions? I have a question. Barbara, can you explain what number one is? Oh, that's Dan. Sorry, I didn't know who.
Sorry. This is an amendment to our COVID relief fund grants, shifting line items.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. Ricano?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Lippi?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Number five will be after executive session. Mr. Seidowitz, would you please see Personnel?
I'd like to move items one through 15. One through 15 and 17 through 35 under Personnel and Student Affairs.
Second. Hand carry separately, you're doing?
Just because it's kind of on its own.
Any questions or comments?
Oh, on number nine. Is that salary correct? Because that's a $22,000 raise, I believe.
That is correct. Correct salary.
Yep.
I just, first of all, I'm a little embarrassed because there's so many teachers out in the audience tonight. And there's so many of them that taught my children. And I love them all. So I hate to be like the mother who picks out their favorite child. And I usually, I usually say, "The dog's my favorite child," but that's another story. Under number four, Mr. Calamari. I...
Favorite child.
Oh, I am so super bummed. I've known this gentleman since he was a little rug rat. He is one of the nicest people, who turned out to be one of the nicest people and a phenomenal teacher. It is a big lost door district that he is resigning. And I, and from what I have been told, and I'm praying that it's true, that he's moving away. I will adopt you. You can take my son's room. He won't mind. Oh, you're married. Never mind. That little awkward word. But seriously, another, as Kate has mentioned, all the wonderful families here in West Milford Township, that's another one as well. But you're still one of my favorites as well. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Tara?
Similarly, number three and number five. As a Maple Road mom, I just want to thank Mrs. Adisi for everything she's done for Maple Road. And anybody who's part of Maple Road knows that Mrs. Clave's class is part of the heart of Maple Road and Mrs. Adisi is a big part of that. And Mr. Chevlin, who was our assistant custodian, he was invaluable to us at Maple Road with the parent organization. So I just want to thank both of them for their service and for everything they've done for the district.
Anyone else? Comments? Questions?
I have a comment. I just want to welcome Dr. Reza to the district. It's on the agenda tonight to be approved. New director of special services, you have some big shoes to fill. But looking forward to working with you.
I second that comment. Welcome. I also want to say for Ms. Barrero, supervisor of transportation, those are some pretty big shoes to fill too. And we will miss you. Thank you for your time here. I think if I remember correctly, Karen's been with us for over 25 years in the transportation department. And being a child of a transportation department person, I know that's a lot of headaches. So thank you. And number two, Ms. Kulak at Macapeen. Oh, those are some shoes to fill too because I call, parents call the main office secretary all the time with stress, right? Whatever it is. And she's just wonderful and she's so good to our kids. And she donates to their fundraisers with a smile and everything. And we will really miss her. So thank you.
Does any other board member have any other comments or questions after mine? Seeing as none, roll call, please.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Lippi?
Yes.
Mrs. Ricano?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
I abstain from 14 and 34, and I say yes to the rest.
All right, congratulations.
Mr. Reza, would you like to speak?
Dr. Reza, you have a couple...
Dr. Reza, sorry.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the time to speak. My name is Derek Reza. I'm the, thank you, new director of special services here in West Milford. It is a joy to be here. I just wanted to thank the board for their and Dr. Anamon for the opportunity to be here and the administration that I've gotten to meet so far and the prior administration as well. And for the staff that I've met and for the warm welcome. I also want to thank my family, my wife, my son, my daughter. They're home right now. Hopefully, they're in bed. And I just want to let you know in the community that I'm a parent as well and really, really value that piece of education for them. Also, I also want to acknowledge my two aunts who are living in the Hunterden Developmental Center where I live. They've been development slaved their whole life and they're a reason why I'm standing here today. So I just wanted to thank you for that and thank them. Also, 20 years in special education, school psychologist by background. So mental health and the whole child approach to education is a big part of why I'm here. And I hope to do that and serve your community well in that regard. And lastly, just servicing community is a big part of what we all are here for. And I just want to thank you again for the opportunity to serve your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Dr. Malus?
Thank you. Thank you.
He's doing the show here, man.
Thank you. All right, so the hardest part actually of walking in tonight is seeing you guys back there, UGL, staff, UGL. That was hard. I'm not going to lie. Sitting up here now, just like, uh-oh, this actually happened. What made, I think, us work, and I'm still going to talk to you guys here, is that we were never divisive. We worked together. Parents, community, our staff, always, right? We were always one. That's why UGL was, sorry, you know, there's other elementary principals here of the best school in this district. So thank you. Absolutely. Mrs. Reinhold's here. And I bring her up because she, wait. I purposely bring her up because she came out of retirement to come back to Macapeen Middle School. I think that says a lot about, obviously, the school itself to take over. Yeah, those are big shoes to fill. Of course they are. But at the same time, I am so lucky to work with the Macapeen teachers, the community, see the passion here, obviously, tonight. Mr. P. Can't wait. Star Wars Day, here we come. All right. And seriously, I don't want to take everyone's time, but thank you, thank you. Thank you to the board. Appreciate your vote of confidence. Dr. Anamon, thank you very much. Mr. Novak, Stavino, Dr. McQuaid, absolutely, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you, Dr. Malus.
I'd like to move Resolution Number 36 under Personnel and Student Affairs, hand carry.
Second.
Questions and comments? Go ahead, Will.
Dr. Anamon, I'd like to thank you personally for all the work that you've done for the school district. As Dr. McQuaid had mentioned before, this was a rotating door for superintendents for quite a long time. And that was supported by a business administrator. And she held us through to that. And now, there's a, there was a team that was put together for six years. And a lot of huge changes were made during that time. You navigated us during, listen, during your tenure, the As the District Turns series had quite a bit of characters that ruffled feathers and you handled it with a lot of grace. And honestly, anybody who knows me knows that I wouldn't have done the same thing. So I give you a lot of commendation for that. But during the course of your tenure, you had to navigate through state aid cuts. And in the process, we are restructuring the district in a big way. And it's going to continue. And that's because the ball was rolling with a leader at the helm. And that couldn't have been any more critical for this district than any other thing that was happening. So thank you for your hard work. Anybody who's ever doubted that you're a Highlander, let me tell you, you are a true Highlander in my eyes. So thank you.
Thank you, Will. Any other comments, questions?
Dr. Anamon, I just want to thank you echoing what Will said. One of the biggest challenges, I think, in your tenure was navigating COVID. And you know, looking back on memories, family members and friends were always super impressed with how our district handled it. And I think that's a testament to your leadership. And I want to thank you for, you know, your listening ear through the years from when I was a rep on SRT. And even when I first started this, we met and I was like, what are we doing? Like, where are we going? What do I have to do? And you've always been very frank, and I appreciate that. So I wish you luck and I, you know, I wish you nothing but the best. So thank you.
Carrie?
Alex, we've had, like, we've talked about this and you and I have had ups and downs. And but we've always worked for the betterment of the district. And I wish, I wish you all the luck and all the best wishes for your new tenure in Ridgefield. And I hope they're as appreciative as we are for your ability to call snow days.
That's true. I second that. Any other comments? Then I will give mine. My husband asked me last night why I was so emotional about this. And I said, "It feels like a divorce and I've never even had one." Because, you know, to quote Alex and I, we had a meeting on Thursday and I was ranting and raving and he said to me, "We're not going to fight about this, Kate." And I said, "Alex, this isn't a fight. This is a discussion and you're going to have it." And he just sat back and he listened to the end. And he listened to the end. And that's what I'm most thankful for, that he listens. I know that as a board member, I know that as a parent, you only see one part of the job of a superintendent. I also happen to know that as a staff member in education in New Jersey in 23 years, you really only see one part of a superintendent. As I wear all my different hats as a human in all the roles that I play, I've told Alex, "He's definitely in the top three superintendents I've ever seen." And when I told him that, he said back, "All right, well, what's my competition? Who are the other two and what do they do better?" And we had that discussion too. He has never turned away my phone call, even before I was board president. If he doesn't pick up, he would text, "I'll call you back in a meeting immediate." He has answered every single question, even when I completely did not like the answer. And more than anything, I've seen him have more heart. And I know right now, he is, this is the most uncomfortable he's probably ever been in in our district because he does not like, like Dr. McQuaid said, any recognition. But if there's one thing, if you know me, heart is important and it's rare. But there are times where I've seen this current superintendent stay until well after midnight because of the safety of one of our students. I've never seen that in my own career in any other superintendent. So I, this is a sad day for me. And that was a very long speech that I didn't plan. But I am sad to see you go. So thank you.
Mrs. Francisco, roll call.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yep.
Mr. Lippi?
Yes.
Mrs. Ricano?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Under Operations and Finance, I'd like to make a motion to move items one through 12.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I just, I have one question about number six. Has the high school looked into any other photographers other than Lors? Because they seem to be the most expensive. I can't answer that question. I'm just, I'm just curious. We just got the request from the high school and we, maybe Mr. Strions can respond to it.
Have you seen others, Tara? I've only ever seen Lors.
Lors and there's some, I can't remember, Crescione, I think.
I was just curious. I've only ever seen Lors in any, anywhere.
Crescione from Patterson.
Well, I'll look at to see.
No, I'm just curious because I'd like to save our kids a little money here. Okay.
Any other questions?
This contract is good for two years, so. Lors is? If you want to push it off or whether you want to.
No. Okay. Seeing as no discussion, roll call, please.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. Ricano?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Lippi?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to move item 13 under Operations and Finance.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Guarino?
Abstain.
Mrs. Ricano?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Lippi?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Abstain.
I would like to make a motion to move items 14 through 17 under Operations and Finance.
Any discussion? Seeing as none, roll call.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Lippi?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Ricano?
Yes.
And Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz, policy?
I move to approve items one through four under policy.
Second.
Yes, Ms., Mr. Guarino?
Thank you. So in policy, under 5120, assignments, assignment of students, appropriate to all students. It's just the paragraph seems pretty vague. That's why I was asking. I know we crossed out a lot of things. What's that?
Elementary.
Okay. And who potentially, anybody in elementary can go?
Well, they could, if there's space availability, if there's, it's not going to push us over into opening another section. There's a list of some of the variables, I guess you could say that we would take into consideration. Special education, fiscal efficiency, maybe classroom space, I believe is one of them. So potentially anybody K5. So it needs to be sold out. What do we think as an administration and a board, and board rates policy, so you guys need to really think this through? What is it that gets precedent over others? You know, and I know there's a lot of discrimination or whatever, but next month's going to be the, yeah. Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Deb.
Um, pertaining to that, I just want to publicly announce that we worked very, very hard on, you know, breaking it down, the committee as a whole. We all came up with very good, um, viewpoints and, um, collaborating on what ifs, okay? So that we wouldn't have an issue of, we didn't see this coming. I mean, granted, things could happen that nobody could see it happening, all right? Um, and, yeah, we, I agree, we need to have something in writing, especially since Dr. Anemo is going to no longer be at the helm. Um, but that being said, I, I personally believe, and Will maybe could jump, you know, you could agree or disagree with me on saying this, I really think we've kind of worked our structure down so that there is something concrete in writing to go by under the circumstances.
I agree with Mrs. O'Brien. The committee did work hard on this. We did put criteria, and we gave enough flexibility and enough rigidity to make sure that the policy could stand kind of the test of time versus being too, to one side of one way or the other. So I agree with this policy as is, and I hope my colleagues support it.
I'll be very honest, I did not read it yet, because I saw it was a first reading. I had a lot to do this week, so I take back my comments, so you have to go back, and I'm very sorry. So, um, I didn't mean that you guys did not work hard in any manner, and I know that you always do, and, and full disclosure, I did not read this one yet. I will, promise.
I'm just, and I'm also announcing it to the public that, you know, this wasn't just a nilly-willy kind of, uh, uh, you know, policy bringing to the table here.
Yeah, thank you. Go ahead, Ray.
So, under, uh, we had a speaker mention 2312. I just want to know, for the state of New Jersey, are there guidelines for class sizes? And do you happen to know what they are, and?
So for special education, there are guidelines.
Right.
Hard guidelines. For general ed, districts have flexibility, and it, there's a guideline for kindergarten, which is 25.
Okay.
For other grades, you can, it's not a best practice to cram too many into a classroom. This is just a, I think it says it's a range, and then a maximum.
Yeah, so I saw your range, 20 to 23, for pretty much the elementary grades. There are probably school districts, or there's, in the state, that have more than that? Yeah, you have, the desired range is 20 to 23, on kindergarten through third grade. On kindergarten through third grade, if the desired student is 20 to 23, with a max of 25, because that's kindergarten, right? You're saying the limit of 30, like, so a class could have 30?
I don't believe it's likely, but that's what the policy says, yeah.
That's what I'm asking. So the state says you could have up to 30?
I think you could have more than that. I don't think it's a best policy, a best practice. I mean, I, I know there are some districts that go to 30, and then they split a class. So if there's 90 students, they have three sections, and when they go to 91, they open a fourth section. So we're not there now.
Right.
I don't think we'll be there this coming year or the year after, you know? On the other hand, additional state aid cuts are going to continue to increase class size. It's just, uh, an eventuality.
So we don't think kindergarten would go to 30 where we would have had an aid?
I don't, I don't believe kindergarten would, no.
Okay.
No, I mean, our numbers, I haven't checked in probably a week or so.
So on, on policy, there's an asterisk, says kindergarten may reach a maximum limit of 30, only if a teacher's aid is required.
With the special class aid.
Yeah, so that's a lot for kindergarten.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ray. Go ahead, Deb.
I just want to, uh, again, uh, in committee, we, we, this class size issue was brought up. Um, I, and, and Dr. Anemo, and I know you're the superintendent, I beg to differ, I really think that there is a state guideline as far as maximum in a classroom, um, minimum-maximum kind of thing. I, I don't know why, it's stuck in my head, and if you prove me wrong, I'm wrong. Um, for the, for the public, this is just a recommendation, this is not a mandatory thing, we are not out to, um, uh, create, like, these super classrooms. We've, we do realize that, especially the younger students, um, a class size of 20 in a kindergarten is like a class size of 40 in, in, you know, middle, high school, because of the intensity, the, the needs of the children, et cetera. Um, I, I have a feeling, Mr. Seidowitz, we're going to have to maybe revisit this next month, because I'm listening to the crowd, and I'm going, hmm, maybe they have a point, and we need to, maybe we'll, we will address it. Again, this is the first reading, which just means that we've, we're presenting it, we want feedback, we're getting the feedback, and we'll go back to, to the drawing board. But again, this is, these are just, there's a parameter, and that's what we're trying to, we're trying to get the parameters set for, for our classrooms.
Thanks, Debbie.
Welcome, Ray. Other comments, questions?
Point of information, I guess, uh, well, actually, it's not anything to do with our proceeding. This is, the question is through you, Mrs. Romeo, to Mr. Brown. For a first reading of a policy that includes changing class sizes, if we approve the first reading tonight, and then we go back and say we take a maximum class size of 30 and change it to 28, is that substantial enough to be effect, to the effect that it needs to be a first reading again?
I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy.
All right, seeing as none, roll call, please. Mr. Seidowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Lippi.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Garino.
Um, yes to 1 and 3, noted 2 and 4.
Mrs. Ricano.
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes to 1 and 3, noted 2 and 4.
Mrs. Lockwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Meeting report, Parks and Rec.
Um, we had a meeting, I believe it was last week. Um, the, I, I won't go into every single item, um, but the, they are in desperate need of lifeguards at Bubbling Springs. Um, so if anybody knows of someone interested, um, you have to be 16, or 15 for lifeguards, um, and you have to be working toward having a lifeguard certification. Um, the application is online, and also, um, they need a seasonal nurse or nurses for Bubbling Springs. It's for eight weeks in the summer, 8:15 to 4:15, starting salary is $30.75. I guess they lost their previous, um, nurse, so they're in need of another one. And, um, I know there is a lot of heartache about the swim team, and it did come up in the rec committee, and, um, I just wanted to share some information that they shared with the committee, that the double raise, um, swim team is, um, they're in the process of evaluating the program. Uh, there's a lot of equipment that needs repair and other activities that can take place at the lake in place of it. Um, I will tell you guys that, um, the rec committee really pushed back a lot on this. Um, I know that there's a lot of, there's actually 61 swimmers and 44 families affected. Um, but the, the crux of it is the program is losing money. Um, the equipment is 25 years old and needs to be replaced. Um, but on the bright side, they're thinking of putting in, uh, one of those inflatable slides to try and draw more people to Bubbling Springs, because registration is very low, and, um, they need to bring the entire, um, lake into the black again, so. Um, otherwise, um, the township fireworks will be Friday, June 30th, with a rain date of July 1st. I know Mrs. Dwyer loves the fireworks, so. Um, so that was it for, um, Parks and Rec.
State committee, um, we don't have, we haven't had a meeting, so thank you. Superintendent Brown, people?
Um, our next meeting is Thursday.
State County School Boards Association?
Our, our next meeting is, um, May 8th at 6 o'clock. We just had one, um, this month where, um, they, the Unsonero Gianna, who came in earlier.
New Jersey School Boards Association?
Uh, one thing I want to draw our attention to, board members, is the fact on March 9th, the New Jersey School Boards Association released a report, firearm safety, process programs and practices for safety in school, home, and community. Obviously, with the tragedies that continue to happen, and that includes, uh, the most recent in Nashville, um, this is, uh, well, these are well-developed studies by the New Jersey School Boards Association, and between this and the mental health task force that was put together several years back, it's something that maybe we could personally endeavor to read more about and share our thoughts with the community. Um, this is a down-the-line announcement. Uh, we annually have a New Jersey School Boards Association convention in Atlantic City, and that takes place in October. Uh, one of the highlights of the, uh, of the convention is seeing different school districts showcase their arts and their music, and I know that our, our talented students could really bring a lot to something like this, so a consideration for the future, and that is my report.
Great idea, thank you. Um, legislative?
All right, for warning, you can go out and get a cup of coffee, and I will still be talking when you return. Um, on March 16th, the Assembly Education Committee approved the following. Suicide prevention training would require additional school, additional school district personnel to complete a training program on suicide prevention. Under current law, public school teaching staff members receive instruction in a suicide prevention, in suicide prevention as part of their professional development requirements. This bill provides a school district employee who is not subject to the current requirement and, and an employee of a contracted service provider who has regular contact with students would be required to complete a one-time training program in suicide prevention, awareness, and response, which is identified by the New Jersey Department of Education. Speaking about social media, we have a social media impact study would establish a commission on the effects of social media usage on adolescents to study the extent of social media usage in and out of public schools, and to determine the effect that use has on students' health and academic performance. Lyme disease prevention instruction would require school districts to incorporate guidelines developed by the New Jersey Department of Education regarding instruction in preventing, in prevention of Lyme disease and other torn diseases into their comprehensive health and physical education curriculum in grades K through 12. Eliminating the high school exam, exit exam, would eliminate the high school graduation proficiency test, which is required under current law to be taken in the 11th grade. Specifically, the bill would prohibit the State Board of Education to, from requiring as part of the standards from graduation from secondary school, any secondary school, Um, security drills in students with disability would take various steps designed to ensure that schools provide students with disabilities the support and accommodations necessary to, to address their unique needs during fire drills, security drills, and actual emergency situations. Um, and, under the, under the Senate, easing state aid cuts would offer additional state aid to school districts that would see a reduction in state aid in the governor's proposed fiscal year 2024 budget as a result of S2. The bill was considered by the Senate Budget Appropriations Committee earlier in the day. Um, in a rare mood, this legislation was sent immediately to the Senate floor on the same day, and it unanimously passed through both committees and the full Senate. That's it.
Thank you. You're welcome. Technology?
Uh, there was no, uh, there was no meeting, so.
Thank you. Um, township and Board of Ed Joint Committee meeting, we have a meeting scheduled for Monday. Uh, municipal alliance?
WMMA met on Monday, March 13th. There were discussions on getting more community members to join, bringing awareness of WMMA to the community, fundraising and programs for the 2024 year. Next meeting will be on Monday, April 10th at 7:00 PM. All meetings are hybrid.
Thank you. And CPAC?
I could leave it on. Uh, so the next CPAC meeting, there's a parent-only meeting that's virtual, that's scheduled for, um, April 4th at 8:00 PM. And then the CPAC meeting, um, is here at Westbrook at 7:00 PM on, I'm sorry, April 3rd is the parent-only meeting, April 4th is the actual CPAC meeting.
All right, moving on to old business. Do we have any old business? Go ahead.
So, I think, I think I'll just bring up and retouch on some of the things that we heard. And I will say, Ray, Alex and Barbara know that I called them because they are in an unenviable situation. It is a lose-lose position. I know that. Um, but first off, it's interesting sitting next to Terry, because as people came up to speak, I heard her say, he's one of mine, she's one of mine, he's one of mine, and, and I'm just thinking to myself about how Terry considers them hers. So, um, I know you consider my son one of yours, too, so I, I thought that was funny as they came up to, to talk, but, um, and it's serious, though, some of the key things I wrote down were, one, I heard about the, the aspect of cutting teachers, and the reality is, hey, we don't have the retirements that, we've had retire, a lot of retirements over the past years, and, and we're at that point where we don't have some of those, so there's, there are some difficult decisions to be made, but there could be, right, some more discussion about what happens, because I heard talk about school resource officers, and boy, like, you know, yesterday hits home when you think about school resource officers and what we do, um, in our own schools. The next thing that I heard the most was this idea of grant writing. So, I, I know, I, I think I heard Will say this probably five years ago or so, like, there's millions and millions of dollars out there, and, you know, if, even if we hired a grant writer to do some of these things, we would probably...
Go ahead.
I think I'll just bring up and retouch on some of the things that we heard. And I will say, Ray, Alex and Barbara know that I called them because they are in an unenviable situation. It is a lose-lose position. I know that. But first off, it's interesting sitting next to Terry because as people came up to speak, I heard her say, "He's one of mine. She's one of mine. He's one of mine." And I'm just thinking to myself about how Terry considers them hers. So I know you consider my son one of yours, too, so I thought that was funny as they came up to talk. But, and it's serious, though, some of the key things I wrote down were, one, I heard about the aspect of cutting teachers, and the reality is, we don't have the retirements that, we've had retired, a lot of retirements over the past years, and we're at that point where we don't have some of those. So there are some difficult decisions to be made, but there could be, right, some more discussion about what happens. Because I heard talk about school resource officers, and boy, like, you know, yesterday hits home when you think about school resource officers and what we do in our own schools. The next thing that I heard the most was this idea of grant writing. So I know, I think I heard Will say this probably five years ago or so, like, there's millions and millions of dollars out there, and, you know, even if we hired a grant writer to do some of these things, we would probably make our money back, you know, five, tenfold. So is that something that, you know, where it could help us in the future? The fourth and fifth things have to do with, first off, the social workers, important again, right? Even with what we saw yesterday, social workers, I think, are more important than ever, and that's a tough thing to think about when you're making hard decisions. And then I mentioned this in our Operations and Finance Committee meeting, that idea of media specialists specifically for the grade schools, the elementary schools, and how important they are there and what they do. And I heard that from a lot of people here about how important it is there. I don't know, I didn't hear, at least I don't think I heard anybody say how important it is in the high school, and I didn't even hear anybody say how important it is in the middle school. Maybe it is, but I heard a lot of questions about, you know, the elementary school, right? It's probably important everywhere, but I heard a lot of elementary school parents come and talk, so, like, we just need to think about that more.
Will, you were next?
No, I was.
Okay. And Terry, it's you then.
I think the high school is sometimes ignored as far as their needs, and one of the biggest needs at the high school is the media specialist. She is in charge of resources for every single research paper that's done in that high school. She edits, she revises for these kids, she meets with them, she meets with teachers, and they bring to her their units. She pulls the resources for them because they don't have the time to get to the library. They're busy. And she works, I know when I was there, I remember that she would come in early in the morning and stay sometimes till 5:00, 6:00 o'clock at night because the kids needed help. She was there for their resource, she was there for their, sometimes even their mental health. I mean, she's an incredible person. She does a lot. She helps guidance, she pulls, she pulls in materials for the guidance department, she pulls in materials for science, for language arts. I mean, she is a valuable asset. And when people say they don't know what the high school media specialist does, I worked at the high school. I know what she did. I watched her, and she was an invaluable resource. So to lose that position and/or to make that a part-time position is an absolute crime. So that's all I have to say.
Any other?
I wasn't at the last meeting, so I'm kind of, you know, so I missed the, you know, the announcement. I do, I'm well aware of what the cuts are, so I don't want to sound like I don't know, but I wasn't there when it was first introduced. Those of you who don't know me, I'm back working in Highlands Family Success Center as a case manager. So I'm working with families throughout the entire county who have, are dealing with either COVID-related or not necessarily COVID-related issues, helping them to keep their apartments, to keep their lights on, to keep their heat, even to find, and I was talking to one of our lovely staff members before, even to find formula. And it's a rewarding position, it is also a heartbreaking position. With that in mind, the fact that we're even thinking of cutting a social worker, mine blows me big time. Because what happens in the home, we really don't see. But the teachers see, the principals see, the staff in the building sees what's going on. And the social worker is such an important position. None of this was thought of back when I was in school, and I don't mean to pull out a rocking chair moment here. My husband and I were joking the other day, when I was back in school, my husband and I graduated the same high school, different years, and there was a serious car accident during Christmas break, and we lost three of our classmates. They died. And when we went back to school, we didn't know, teacher would say, "Oh, by the way, so-and-so's not here. He died during the break." And that was it, and you had to deal with it on your own. And we lamented that, and I had a classmate who ended up in a vegetative state for over 30 years before he passed. There was no social workers. You dealt with it on your own. We've become wiser and smarter in that regard, and we really need that. And we need, and I truly believe social workers are also there for the faculty and staff. It's a collaborative team effort because kids are dealing with things you and I never had to deal with as a child. I can't even fathom, I can't imagine, and I think that's so darn important. Also, media specialists. I think they are equally as important in their tasks and helping out. They're definitely a lifeline for the faculty and staff and the students. I went to four different elementary schools, sorry to make a little sense, to read to the kids, and it was all this media specialist. They picked out these, they knew me, they're like, "Okay, O'Brien's coming, we've got to pick out the weirdest, wildest, craziest book." And those who were storming in action knew that this book would be perfect for me. And that's just Debbie O'Brien and not everybody else, not the faculty, not the staff, and most importantly, the students. So I'll be honest, I'm going to fight for those positions. I like to fight for every position, but those two right now are just so darn important. Thank you.
I'd like to remind my colleagues that it is, I don't want to say disingenuous, but we really do need to think a little more critically down the road. If it's not this year, what happens next year? Do we then cut those positions because it's the right move? You know, we've been offered suggestions on this possibility of state aid that's going to funnel in to save jobs. So we're going to do that, and then down the road, we're going to cut jobs anyway. You know, let's not traverse too far away from the path that the administration has laid out, because the administration does have to think about what's happening on the ground. If it's not a group of people representing one teacher, this meeting, it's going to be a group of people representing another personnel down the road. So we're going to keep doing this and doing this, and our heartstrings are supposed to be tugged at this point. This is probably the hardest juncture in not only the district's history, but our township's history. And we really, really need to buckle down and trust that decisions are being made wisely. Because if it's not now, it will be later. And to the point of, I made a point five years ago, there are many points that I made five years ago, one of which was thinking outside the box, was outsourcing. I got publicly berated for things like that. One of those suggestions five years ago, six years ago, was joining in the efforts of possibly closing a school. I was berated. My brother was humiliated at ShopRite by people who thought that thinking outside the box was really, really not a good idea. So here we are, a juncture that we're going to meet again and again until we get it right. I say not, I say this, and it's going to sound heartless, we pull the Band-Aid now, and we do what's right for the students. If we don't pull the Band-Aid, we're just prolonging the agony.
So I actually, you know, for Barbara, for Billy sitting out there, I know this is tough for you, too, because you grew up here, right? This is, this is what you know. So it is, it's difficult for these folks, and I get what you're saying. But that's also coming from the guy who said we should have a 0% increase, and Barbara said beforehand that we, we're just kicking the can down the road, so I get what you're saying, Will. But we're kicking the can down the road, and we do, we have to make these tough decisions. But I think that, right, we can look at some things differently. And I know that talking to, and you know, talking to Barbara and Alex, they've been receptive in listening, and Billy's in there, too, right? They've been receptive to listening, so, but ultimately, you're right, the decisions do have to be made that are going to be tough for some people.
Can I just, I just want to, Will, I respect your opinion, but I have to tell you that when I took my oath as a board member, I understood that I had a fiduciary responsibility, but I also understood that I had a responsibility to my children, or the children in the community, and the parents, and the staff. And I think when we look at these cuts, we have to really, really think carefully about how they're going to affect the community, because it will affect the community as a whole. It will affect their attitude toward the school district. And I think, having said that, we have to put, we have to look at these cuts a little bit closer. So yes, they have to be made, but the social worker is extremely important, the media specialists are extremely important. So let's go back and let's just look at them, you know, and try to come to a compromise. Thank you.
Yeah, the hard part on that is when, I voted no to a specific thing, right? Because the hard part is, does that increase class sizes, right? That's, that's the balance, right? You know, like, I get that, I understand that, so it's a tough thing.
We're in old business still, yeah?
Move to close old business?
No, I have something.
Shoot.
Just wanted to make sure I was in the right place. I just wanted to thank Mrs. Lockwood for going to the Passaic County Dinner where one of our students was awarded. I think it is extremely important as we sit here and talk about all the things that our staff does and all the things that we do as a community, and that we support our students when they're given awards, when they're honored, that we're there for them, that we show up. And I just want to thank you so much for showing up. That's my only old business. Does anyone else have anything? Thank you. All right, go ahead, motion to close old business, please?
Move to close old business.
All in favor? Any opposed? New business? Anyone have new business?
So.
Go ahead, Ray.
Told you. So I guess I'm only putting this under new business because I do think we need to be commended. It could have gone under either. The Kilgallen baseball field really does look fantastic, and I know I was a thorn in Barbara's side a little bit, asking for it to be on the agenda each month, and I see by the, I see by the look of Barbara, she's going, "Yes, you were." But I do think that Chris and his team did a really good job in working to make that a really nice baseball field for West Milford and for the schools to come and say, "Hey, this is the, you know, we're getting, we're at the field that I remember it being all those years ago." So thank you.
Anyone else?
So I just want to talk about the cuts in new business. I didn't talk about them in old. I feel like it's also new. I'm uncomfortable with all of the cuts. I love the idea of a town hall meeting where we come together, like we did to, you know, we were in the Macabre Cafeteria, people showed up from town council, parents came. I wish more staff was there. We need the input from staff. Administrators were there, and we broke off into groups, and we talked about our strategic planning, and we talked about what we wanted to see in our district. We can do that about grant writing, we can do that about ideas and how to make our district better. You know, there are so many things out there, so then, yeah, let's do it, you know, rather than another agenda item where we're paying people $36 an hour to write more grants or do whatever, and then we're back to square A, you know, like, I'm all for that. So if a community member wants to plan that, if the administration wants to plan that, you know, I don't work here, I'm just a volunteer, and I will show up, and I will help you write grants. So anyone that wants to do that, I think that's an awesome idea. I also think that we can come together as a town hall meeting and continue to find something to do to write letters to the governor's office, to get into the political, you know, realm of, this is a problem. And I, you know, we've said it up here, and no one is really taking the helm, and I have to tell you, the nine people up here, you heard me admit that I didn't get to read my whole packet, right? I read what I had to, I took my notes, I highlight, I didn't get through all of it. You know, I have hours, we all put hours in, volunteer time. So I'm asking you guys to help us. Let's all work together. Let's do this. No, I hate every single cut on this. I don't want to see any of them. You know, you've heard me say it a thousand times, it affects my community, it affects my family, it affects my child, it affects me. I'm not the only mom losing sleep at night, I know that. So let's do this together. There are some times where I do feel very alone, and I'll tell you that these eight people right here, they answer my phone calls, too, every single time. And we're trying to put our heads together, but the reality is, we don't get to make the ideas. We can't write this agenda. So we have to vote on what's there, you know, and I think that's the hardest part about this job. I can have an opinion, but I don't get to write it. I only get to vote on it. And I really hope that the community understands that, because no one should be harassed at ShopRite or in the, or up at the track. No one should be calling and yelling at us for the cuts that are presented. They're not my ideas. You know, we're going to share our ideas, we are going to try to come to a compromise. But as Will said, there's always going to be somebody unhappy, no matter what it is. This room will be filled with different people, no matter what we cut. You know, I agree with a lot of the comments that were made. Some of these things might be huge mistakes. We've done that before, and we've brought them back and shifted things around, you know, so we have to go back to the drawing board this week, you know, this month, and all, every single thing will be discussed. The last thing I wanted to say is, you know, I know that there was, there's a lot of staff here. I'm the board president. I did ask for a lot of people to have rice notices. I did, so that we can discuss all these things. Don't be scared, we support all of you. We want to keep every single one of you, but we can't, right? Like, that's not, and we don't want the state to come in and run our budget because our classrooms will be over 30. So yes, we have to discuss positions and what's happening. So be thankful that we're having discussions rather than just saying, "Let the superintendent do whatever he wants." If you don't get those notices, that means we're not asking questions, you know? My phone's been off the hook with, everybody's scared, everybody hates you, everybody thinks that, you know, because you sent out rice notices, they're all panicked, they're all this, they're all that. Be thankful that we're having discussions and asking questions, please, you know? I don't want to make anyone else lose sleep at night or not feel good about what they're doing every day with our kids. All right, that's enough. Thank you so much for listening, and seriously, this is not easy. Can someone, anyone else under new business? Go ahead.
So, right, this doesn't just affect West Milford, it affects lots of these towns that are in the Highlands, and you talk about town halls. Again, I don't know if this legally is right or not, but it'd be great if the nine board members also talked to the Vernon and the Jeffersons and all these other towns that are losing lots of money and having to cut a lot more staff than even West Milford has to cut. And it'd be great if staff members in those towns got together. That's the grassroots effort and the letters and the calls to the governor's office and your state senator and your state congressman that could help, because all these things are happening to some of these, right, specifically many districts.
Well, let's host it. You know, somebody out there, get a notepad, get emails, start, you know, like, West Milford can host it. You know, we could start a campaign to show the unfairness or to write letters. Go ahead, Deb.
So I'll piggyback on that. So if we, we are thinking along the same lines, Mr. Guarino, as far as getting a group of people together, I think maybe the first place to start is ask our superintendent start that way, get both, get, get, get the posse together, get the administrators, get the board of ed people, get the community members involved.
Wasn't there a, whatever happened to that group SOS, save our schools? Whatever happened to that?
Is that the one with the superintendent that we went, was, no, that was...
This is, uh...
It seemed to be, it dissipated during the pandemic at some point. It was before that pandemic that it got started, when the huts started ramping up, and it seemed to have dissipated. It's probably time to get the gang back together again.
Get the band together.
I want to make a point, I think that those efforts are happening. I mean, we voted on a motion tonight to have a cooperative team, and, you know, every school district, I, I believe in joining efforts to do things. If we want to join in efforts to do things, let's stop the legislature from ever meeting again, because every time they meet, there's an unfunded mandate that we pay for. Along the lines of things that hopefully we could do, is, we, as a board, should probably take a look at the intricacies of the funding formula, because every student gets a certain point, right? One normal, one regular student, without any outside special services needed, gets one point. If that student needs special services, they get additional weighted points. If that student needs free lunch, that student gets additional points. We live in a Highlands district, probably the only township that lives almost 100% in a Highlands area. Between that and urban enterprise zone, or urban enterprise zones, you know, there should be weight for those types of zones that were designated by the legislature, who's making us pay for things that they're mandating. They're great ideas that Mrs. O'Brien was reading, you know, where does that money come from? You know, where does it come from? So maybe in the future, in the near future, that's what we discuss, is, is taking that look at the, the funding formula, and try to get something for being in a Highland zone.
That's another great letter, is that all the unfunded mandates over the last five years, or 10 years. You know, we could have the HIB specialist, the, you know, all of these things that come that, you know, we don't get money for, but we have to provide. All right, any other new business?
Move to close, new business.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're going to move to public comment. This portion of the meeting is open to members of the public having a legitimate interest in the actions of the, I'm sorry, having a legitimate interest in the actions of the board for the purpose of addressing any subject matter pertinent to and/or directly related to the operation of the West Milford Public School District. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes, and then, time permitting, other public comment, limited to five minutes per speaker, will be allowed until the 30-minute period transpires. All speakers are asked to sign the register provided, and give their full names, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged, and the board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Is there anyone signed up, Mrs. Francisco? Is there anyone that would like to speak?
Hi, Monica Church, 40 Beach Haven Road. Nobody brought it up tonight, but I just want to mention athletics, which was part of the preliminary budget, I don't know what the, the plans are. Just want to stress the importance, especially for our high schoolers, giving them something to do after school, so I don't know what the intention is. Someone had mentioned family ID, has been the same price for 10 years, I didn't know that. So for those that don't know, if your child plays a sport in high school, there's one fee for the entire year, it's $75, whether they do winter, spring, whatever, it is one fee. So I know most parents would agree, they prefer to pay more, so that the programs don't go away, but that being said, not everybody is as lucky as me, or some of my friends that can afford that. So I don't agree with doubling it necessarily, especially in one year, maybe, you know, rise it incrementally, or change the payment structure, maybe one fee per sport, if they don't do a winter sport, they don't pay, or maybe something in there that says, hey, want to donate, you know, to a child that can't afford this fee for the year. At the Macapeen PTO meeting, we learned from Mrs. Reinhold that one of the local churches was collecting money to, I think she's here, to fund a Macapeen student going to Philadelphia, and the same thing for DC. So some of us wrote checks right then and there, because we're one of the lucky ones, I can afford that stuff for my son and for my daughter. So maybe you do that in the sports, but I know parents, we'd be willing to do anything to prevent athletics from being cut. There's been a rumor about freshman sports, most of the girls don't have freshman sports, there's just not enough girls unfortunately in the district that do sports, but a lot of the boys do. So that would really be devastating for them, because that gives them structure, again, they're not on their phones after school, maybe they're getting yelled at by a coach, but they're moving and they're, they're doing stuff. So, so maybe something in the family ID, a donation button, we'd be willing to do anything so that athletics don't be cut. And I don't mean to downplay the other stuff, but athletics hasn't been mentioned, I want to make sure that there, that would be, you know, really devastating if any of the programs were cut in the high school. And I know in Macapeen, it's more after school, it's unfortunate, we don't have middle school sports like our counterparts in Warwick and stuff, but, so to try to keep what we have now would be really important. So, thank you.
Monica, there was a first reading tonight on participation fee program, in that it does say that every April, it would be decided upon here at board meeting, but it is my understanding that the high school will go up a little, and that Macapeen would be fair across the board as a one fee, as per every student in every activity they've been in, we're paying, so Macapeen would be just like the high school, that was our goal, just FYI. Liz?
Liz McQuade, 32 Bissett Drive. I just wanted to address the board, because I heard items coming up about looking at the funding formula, and I always think exploring ways to save the district, or look at things again, is a smart idea. But that being said, we've sat around this table, and what I'm sharing is public, and we've talked about legislation efforts, and you guys reaching out, and you as a board, and prior boards have tried those efforts, you have attempted that, we, without prevailing, right? Because we're still at the table again in the same way. So I understand tonight is a difficult night, and I too, as a parent, as a community member, I don't want to see cuts, they don't want to see cuts, nobody does, right? But I think as a board, as a board, you guys are going to have hard decisions to make, and I always think it's a good idea to go back, and between the preliminary budget and your final, talk about it, but I think to your point, you are going to then come back out with possible, the possibility of it even being more difficult, or not having that same benefit to students. So I just, I know you guys are going to have a difficult job over the next few weeks, but I also just want the public to know that you have made efforts before, and I don't know, between now and your budget, you're going to actually be able to change anything with the current situation you're in, and which we know the future is going to hold. So, that's it.
Thank you. Is there another speaker?
My name's Matthew Goff, 34 Center Street, been here many times. I'm just concerned that the restructuring really didn't accomplish anything. The goals were minimizing loss of staff, keeping class sizes low or average, and saving in transportation, and I don't see any of those being accomplished. The numbers on the policy that we had to look up on our phones while we were sitting here, your minimum class size for K through 3 of 18 is pretty much around what you said our max was going to be, while we sat through six months of the restructuring meetings. 30 for kindergarten through 3, and an aid if hitting 30. Basically, for months at a time, my wife spent a lot of her personal time doing research on population and things like that, everything was basically hit a wall, nobody wanted to hear anything about possible increases in the future with, with the COVID housing boom and things like that. I just don't see why we're setting these maximums so high, when we were told the population's never going to go up. So I just, I know, I think it's unanimous that nobody wants to see a kindergarten class of 30 kids, especially in West Milford. I'll move to, you know, Hackensack, if I want, you know, but we were told that there's plenty of space in all the schools that the kids are being moved to out of Westbrook. I guess we were including closets, because there's definitely not enough room. If you hit 30 kids at Marshall Hill or Maple Road, and you say, wow, 30's too much, we got to find a classroom somewhere, probably not going to have it. Schools are not as big as you think they are, like the one we're standing in right now. And we were told that, you know, the effects of the kids being moved away from school, and maybe they're in kindergarten or third grade, fourth grade, they've made friends, now they're going to be split from their friends, and, you know, they'll, they'll be back together in middle school, but, you know, the kids are resilient because of the help that they're getting at home, and these staff that you're looking to get rid of, social workers, and the media specialists, like, we're talking about helping kids learning how to read, and actually getting them to want to learn how to read. So it's just, it just, it's frustrating. And I know I'm just expressing what most people think, and I know, you know, you guys are, you guys are giving your own time to come up with these things, and, and all the time that you put in, I appreciate it. I'm just frustrated that none of the goals of the restructuring that were given to us were really accomplished. And I don't know if they're going to be accomplished, and I'm really glad that at least a few of you shot down the first reading of Agenda Item 2 of class size, and I'm a little surprised that, and disappointed that so many people actually let it go past the first reading, and that these numbers are actually like, okay, to some people. I hope they're not, I hope that when you go back to the drawing board, you know, something looks a little better. I know class size at this point, unfortunately, is peanuts compared to getting rid of people, people losing their jobs, but, you know, it's all, it's all intertwined, the effects of the kids, when they lose maybe a staff member that, you know, maybe that one staff member is that person that makes them say, okay, no, I'll go to school today, I'm going to go to school today, and then they're gone. And it all, it's all intertwined, and, you know, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just frustrated that it's affecting people's jobs, and full circle to affect the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker?
I know why, I was up here before, my name's Teresa Lindman, I live 41 Summer Vale Road. With the most respect, what are you thinking? What are you thinking? Teachers are retiring, teachers are leaving, teachers aren't coming here, teachers aren't like, oh, West Milford's the place I want to be. Class sizes? Like, one thing that I liked about living here was class sizes are small. Class sizes were really small, and I was like, okay, great, now my third grader, when she came in kindergarten, I don't know, there was over 20 kids, and I'm like, it was one thing that I liked about this school, is that the class sizes are small. Now she's in third grade, and the class sizes are huge. Now, my son's in first grade, if you've been in Ms. Varian's class, she's got like 20-something kids, there's, there's no room. Now you're going to put 30 kids in a kindergarten class, and, and maybe an aid? Really? Really? Those 30 kids are going to be first graders, then they're going to be second graders. What are you thinking? Ask one of these third grade teachers, because those 30 kids are going to be in a fifth grade class. Is, is an aid going to help you? Is an aid going to help any of these? Now, no disrespect, because I know your aides are awesome, but any of these fifth grade teachers, is an aid going to help you with 30 children? How big are your classrooms? That you're going to fit 30 students? Now you need 30 desks, so you have 30 students and 30 desks?
If you could just address the...
Sorry, sorry, sorry. But you have no room. What are you thinking? What are you thinking? People aren't moving here, and when you see the schools, and then they see your class sizes, and then you see 28 kids, and then, oh, maybe, maybe you'll get an aid at 30? That means, are your class sizes going to get bigger? Come on! Come on! I know you're trying to do your best, but we can do better, and we can do better for our students. And the idea that maybe the class sizes, the highest are going to go is 30 with an aid, are you really going to give them an aid? We have budget cuts now. Are you going to give these teachers an aid? Come on, you can do better. What are you thinking?
Do we have another speaker?
Dr. Marissa Goff again, 34 Center Street. I just have a couple follow-up questions. I know from what Debbie O'Brien said, that this larger class sizes isn't something that's going to happen right now. I read all the PowerPoints, I read everything from restructuring, I know the average class sizes that they're proposing for the next few years. If I remember correctly, they said for my daughter's class next year, it'll be 19 kids, which I don't see how that's feasible, considering her current class is 22, but I'm, I'm trusting those numbers, I do understand that. I know that down the road, because of the schools that remained open or smaller, that if there is a slight fluctuation, if there are more children coming in, that we have lost that wiggle room, and that, yes, we will need to have larger class sizes. I do see that as a terrible idea, I'm obviously stating the obvious. And going off of what you said, Debbie O'Brien, is, things exist now that didn't exist years ago. Things like something happened yesterday in Nashville, mass shootings, security, these things have to be taken into account before you put more kids in a classroom with just one teacher. And I know, like she said, we're not going to be hiring any more aides, we're not hiring anybody, but we have to keep that in mind, that there's things that exist that did not exist all these years ago, all these behavioral issues. Autism now, I think is what, 1 in 36, it used to be 1 in 50? All of these things that really didn't exist, and now they do. This is going to become more and more of a problem if you put these kids in bigger class sizes. My daughter's only five, my son is three, my daughter has anxieties, she's able to work through them, we work through them together, but if you put her in a bigger class, she might be gen ed now, but maybe she'll need special services, and you would have done that to her. I can't guarantee that, but I need you to consider that for the general education population, because I really feel like they're getting left behind here. Is that for that person that gets that one point, I feel like you're almost giving them a ding, because they're normal. That's not fair. And the other thing that I have to bring up, is looking at the two new positions that you brought into it, and I really hope this doesn't put a red mark on my head, is when you're coming in to hire somebody, please consider the, the amount of the raise that you're giving them. You know, the two positions had a 20K raise, maybe together you could have saved one of the media specialist positions, had you not offered such a large raise. And I know why you have to offer those raises, because you want these people to come to our district, we were trying to save our district. But keep that in mind, these large raises have now lost another position in our school, and maybe it's that one teacher that all those children love. And with that said, I've, I said to one of the members in the back there, one of the residents, that when I was in middle school, I hated school. I had that one teacher in eighth grade that completely changed my mindset of school, made me want to try, made me become a doctor. Had I not had that teacher, that teacher left because of cuts, because of fear of losing her job, I would not be standing here at this podium, addressing myself as a doctor. I just have to let that be known. So please consider that. Moving forward, I know it's done, I know it's voted on, but before you hire people in, consider the people that you have, and the people that you need to save. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker?
Move to close, public comment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mrs. Lockwood, if you could read for executive session, please?
Sure. At 9:25...
our district. We were trying to save our district. But keep that in mind. These large raises have now lost another position in our school. And maybe it's that one teacher that all those children love. And with that said, I've, I said to one of the members in the back there, one of the residents, that when I was in middle school, I hated school. I had that one teacher in eighth grade that completely changed my mindset of school, made me want to try, made me become a doctor. Had I not had that teacher, that teacher left because of cuts, because of fear of losing her job, I would not be standing here at this podium addressing myself as a doctor. I just have to let that be known. So please consider that. Moving forward, I know it's done. I know it's voted on. But before you hire people in, consider the people that you have and the people that you need to save. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mrs. Lockwood, if you could read for executive session, please?
Sure. At 9:25, I make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters, resignations, HIBs, and matters of attorney-client privilege. The executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable. The board will be in executive session for approximately 70 minutes. We will be coming back to take action.
Excuse me, class. I'm just kidding. Ready?
So at 10:38, I make a motion to go back into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel and matters of attorney-client privilege. The executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable. The board will be in executive session for approximately 30 minutes. Action will be taken when we return.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Welcome back. Roll call, Ms. Francisco. Mr. Seidowitz?
Here.
Mrs. Ricano?
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Guarino?
Here.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Here.
Mr. Lippi?
Here.
Mrs. Romeo?
Here.
Mrs. Lockwood, under Education?
I make a motion to approve the following agenda item under Education. The recommendation of the superintendent to approve the following HIBs, 2023/M9 as substantiated, 2023/M10 as substantiated?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing as none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Lippi?
Yes.
Mrs. Ricano?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
I'm going to ask Mrs. Lockwood to move the next items under Personnel, Student Affairs. Put that wrong. Personnel and Student Affairs. Sorry. So I passed my bedtime. I make a motion to approve the following. Be it resolved that Board of Edu-, that the Board of Education has determined to deny grievances filed by the West Milford Bus Drivers Association docketed as 2023-01 and 2023-02. Second. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Ms. Francisco.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Lippi?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Ricano?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
I also make a motion to approve the following. Be it resolved that the Board of Education terminates employee. The number is identified in the minutes of the meeting effective 3/31/2023.
Second. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Ms. Francisco.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Lippi?
Yeah.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Ricano?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oh?
One more.
One more?
Donation.
Thank you, Claire. We need to discuss.
Sorry, take that back.
I was, I was wondering if we could move our committee meeting to April 17. I have a personal matter on the 18th and I would like to be at the committee meeting.
Everybody grab your phones.
We could entertain it, but only if everyone finishes their school ethics forms. Just saying.
Could you, could you like spell out the guilty parties? I'm okay on the 17th.
19th?
So?
I can get make the 19th.
20?
No. 21st?
Oh, 19th? Okay, I'll do it. Oh, 21st? No way.
17th?
Can't be the following prior? Can't be the week prior.
Well, yeah. The only other question I have is if you're going to move the board meeting from the 25th of April, then you could have committee meetings to 24th. Of course, based on people that are not going to be able to attend the board.
I could do the 24th, too.
That's up to the board, though. I'm just going to suggest you know.
But that's only if we're moving the board meeting.
Well, you don't want to have committees on Monday and that board meeting on Tuesday.
Yeah, for not that.
What do y'all do next week? Why don't we have committees next week?
Oh, I could do that.
I can't, but that's okay. I think I'm prepared.
I can't. There's a CPAC meeting on the 4th?
Yeah.
About the best high school?
That's National Hall of School.
Band room? Oh, no, I have a meeting about, like, when does it say? It's the bedroom. I mean, I think I'm the only one they can't make the 17th. And that's fine. I haven't missed the committee. It's okay.
You can't make the 17th, though, either, you said, right?
I can't make the 18th.
Oh, you can't make?
I would be, it would be close, I think, to get there. So 17th would be better.
17th is fine.
Thank you, thank you. I feel like that's fair. That Tara would give that up. She has.
I've gone to every committee meeting, like the last one.
Oh, you sure won't.
Right now, I'm excited for every one of us.
Are we keeping the board meeting at the 25th?
That's the next thing.
I can't make that, so.
So we have two people that can't be there that night. Will and Peter. And I think we talked about the following, we talked about May 2nd, but I thought that Terry and Ray couldn't be there on May 2nd.
It's Tuesday?
No, I can be there May 2nd. I can do. I thought you said you couldn't. No, I.
So you got that day wrong, remember? You said you couldn't and then whatever you have to do is not the 2nd.
Yeah, I thought I changed.
Wasn't there like some concert or something going on?
Yeah. Does that affect payroll? Does that affect contracts that we have for every month?
No, I'm good May 2nd. I don't have anything. I have the 7th, I was thinking of.
Well, that didn't happen just a few months ago.
So we're going to do the board meeting?
And it affected our students negatively. So we need to discuss these things. And I cannot be dismissed on a very important question because contracts are not always paid at the end of the month if we move our meetings. So, and they have very serious repercussions, sometimes for our kids. So I don't like moving an April meeting into May.
Could it be the 27th?
I could do. I'm free after the 21st.
That's the National Honesty induction at MacKipin.
Again, right?
Is the 27th.
Once I get that.
Once we get it.
So we have a meeting without two people or?
On the 25th. What can we do the 25th without two people? We still have one.
Because you want one, right?
Can anybody meet the 18th?
18th, I got my meeting. 17th, can you wait?
All counties?
26th, can you wait? 27th, can you wait?
23rd, you're back there. Thursday.
That's National Junior.
Thursday, I could be. No, it's Honor Society.
What about the 26th?
So, Claire, you have to be in Honor Society then?
We were all invited to that. And I'm assuming some administrators might be there?
But can't we, but that's my point. A meeting can be held at any time.
After it? It's at 7. I mean, I only put it in because we were invited. I don't have to be there. I was going, we do some before, some after. Well, this is for the meeting, though, not for the committee, right?
It's for the meeting.
This is for the meeting.
Are we doing the committee on the 17th?
I think so.
Yes.
Is Tara's been, Tara's been committed down? Right?
Thanks. Okay, so we're doing the committee, the April committees on April 17.
Right.
Right.
Okay, so now you have a board meeting, April 25th, that has a scheduled public hearing of the budget.
And two board members can't come. What about the 24th?
The only other thing that you can do is schedule another meeting for the public hearing of the budget, but.
There would be an extra meeting then, right? What about the 24th? No?
But he won't be down.
And Will won't be there.
Okay.
On the 24th, favoring?
With the 27th, we could butt up against. I don't know how long this lasts. But I'm meeting start 8:30 till 7:00.
No, it's not. I have a start date. I have a cross game. I just have to make sure my.
I could do. You have to start the meeting by 8 o'clock.
I have to start by 8.
Oh, are you trying to?
I'm talking about something completely different. I'm a thousand make a different possible idea. I need to check the team and then the meeting first. Because everybody can make a meeting on the 17th. So if they could do the budget meeting on the 17th, a new committee to one of the two weeks above that.
All right.
Everybody, Tara can make it by 8 on the 17th.
There is definitely not enough time to discuss what y'all need to discuss, if that's the case. I'd rather take the hit than you miss the opportunity to discuss what you need to discuss. So leaving it on the 25th.
Public hearing on the budget can't be any earlier.
Thank you, okay.
Than the last week.
Than the 24th.
Right.
Sorry, I didn't know that.
It can't be earlier and it needs to be advertised.
Of course.
In the newspaper, week prior to the meeting. So my suggestion is either you move it in some May.
What is, what is the deadline, Tara, for the budget?
The deadline? The last day that it can be basically approved is like May 8.
Okay.
Or, and then it has to be resubmitted. I would say May 8 is kind of your, like, outside date. You could still, you could discuss it after that point in time, but you can't have another meeting to approve it. So the last meeting date has to be May 8.
So what about May 3rd or the 4th?
Now we're running into a case that, about end of the month, pay the bills, budget and contracts.
Yeah, the bills have to be paid by April 30th, right?
I hate the suggestion, running the April meeting as regular business to approve the things and then the subsequent meeting in May is strictly the budget. You know, that way bills can get paid, everybody can do what they need to do. He should do.
Right. And then, top of it, if the two of you are not there, that's not a real big, you know, issue again.
I like that idea, too.
Keeping the 25th?
Keep 25th as the April regular meeting and then have a separate May for the public hearing.
And then, you know, personnel, maybe any hits that show up, we can, that could be all taken care of at that time and then maybe, yeah, I like that idea.
So do the 25th and the 2nd?
Okay, okay.
Ray can't be here on the 2nd, right?
Who can't be here on the 2nd?
No, I can. I have the date to.
Ray can't.
Ray can't.
Oh, right.
No, Ray, you can't be here on the 2nd?
I won't. I can't be here on the 2nd.
The 3rd or the 4th?
Second, 3rd, I'll be gone.
Maybe the 3rd.
3rd or, oh, 2nd.
Or 4th, 2nd, 3rd. Let's say 1.
May 1st? Monday, May 1st?
I'll be here on the 1st.
May 1st is my son's birthday. I can't be here on the 1st. It's my son's birthday.
I can tell you how many birthdays my kids didn't see, but that's.
Well, listen, I mean, if everybody else can, then it'll be, okay.
It's going to be 13. So it's clear that not everybody is going to be able to be at the budget meeting.
Keep it in April, fail it, see. Really, I'll. I mean, you could do it the 2nd. I'm not here, I'm not here.
I'm good with the 2nd.
I'm sure with the 2nd.
So I'm putting this in pen in my little calendar.
I would make it.
Don't forget any.
You could have to revise.
I wouldn't put anything in pen.
Just, just remind me because I also, I was going to a concert on that night and it was the 7th.
I'm carrying a budget on May the 2nd.
Okay, budget.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Is that what we're doing? So the committees are on the 17th. We're keeping the 25th and we're also adding the 2nd. Okay, what time are we doing the budget? 7 o'clock? And what time are we doing the April 25th meeting?
Same time, 7 o'clock.
Okay. Well, I don't know. Okay, got it. Don't worry about it.
I'll send something out tomorrow to confirm everything?
Okay, great. Oh, this is great.
Democracy. It works.
Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.